Water School Committee Meeting, February fourteenth, 2023. And at this time, I take a motion to open our meeting. So moved. Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you, EB Camp, for always live streaming and recording our meetings. And at this time, we have our student rep, Lilia Fagundes. Hello.
Hi. Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.
I'm very excited to have a heavy load of information to share with you all tonight. So first, looking ahead to next week, all schools will be on February break, which is exciting. Which means classes have been wrapping up with last assignments, projects, and tests before the break. I have some information specific to the middle school. At the end of the week, the middle school will have completed all three steps to the Alice Winter Training and is looking ahead to plan for spring training. The book fair at the middle school was a huge success in the winter, raising more than three times the amount it has in the last five years, which is very exciting. And it's something which, speaking from experience, especially everyone, especially the students, look forward to. There will be another book fair scheduled for the week of March thirteenth, and everyone involved hopes it will have the same success as this one. Tomorrow night, February fifteenth, there will be the Second Annual Bingo for Books Night, hosted by the Mitchell Literacy Club in the cafeteria at the middle school. All are welcome, and all that is required is that you bring a book for the book swap. This event sounds like a lot of fun, and it's a great way to incorporate learning and fun. Throughout being in contact with Mr. Phuket at the middle school over the past couple of weeks, he has informed me and would like to note the amount of significant progress at the middle school between social-emotional learning, data collected for student growth, and the improvement in curriculum and instruction. There has been a notable amount of progress all around, so great job to everyone in the Mitchell community. Moving on to the high school, as I mentioned earlier, the high school will be on break along with the central and Mitchell schools. When we come back for breaks, class scheduling for next year will begin. There will be conversations going on throughout the building about different classes and subjects and course selections for the upcoming school year. Parent-teacher conferences for grades seven through twelve will be March first, second, and third, held at the high school. As of tonight, the link has been sent to parents in order to sign up for conferences. Parents can look for an email from Mr. Clemens to select your time spots for conferences. One of the main things that will be discussed in the conferences will be course selections for next year, so there will be discussions between teachers and students, and then they'll be forwarded to the parents, so they can discuss that with the teacher. To wrap up this week, Mr. Clemens will meet with the seniors about important dates and information for Senior Week. They want to get that information out as quick as possible, so that they can plan accordingly. Some upcoming events held at the high school are Mr. EBHS, which is going to be held March tenth in the auditorium, which is always an exciting event, and the Winter Play, High School Musical, which I'm sure will be a packed house. Some sports updates, most of the teams have had their senior nights, and boys hockey is the last team to have their senior night, which is tomorrow at the Bridgewater Ice Arena. The track team competes on Thursday at the Division V State Championship, and the cheerleading team will make its first appearance at Leagues tomorrow night, competing against Middleborough and Mashpee. The Winter Sports Banquet is scheduled for Thursday, March sixteenth, put on by Mr. Leonard. And the last piece of information I have for tonight is that the Viking Sports Parents Annual Road Race will take place again, and it's the twentieth year that this event has been put on, so make sure to sign up for that. And that is all that I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was a lot.
What's the date of the road race?
I don't have it on here. I believe it's in April, but I'm not sure.
April first or second. It's the beginning of April. Are you gonna start training? Are you gonna run, Gordon?
You get a lot of candy grams today?
No, I'm not gonna run.
Only one.
Only one?
Yeah.
You sure? Gonna make sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have educational philosophy, those are the subcommittee standing committee updates. We have educational philosophy of the district for a brief update. So we're not voting on anything today. You're gonna bring, my understanding is that you're gonna bring something back to the following meeting.
We'll have it be your agenda for the next meeting. It's complete, though. We've done it, we like it, it's ready to present to you.
Okay, good. Thank you, that's the update. Thank you.
Can I just add thanking the schools and the committees and the councils that looked at it, because it was a collaboration. We put some meat into it, but it was their final thoughts that added and contributed to that as well.
Thank you. And next up, we have Superintendent Evaluation Timeline. This has action required, so it's the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee that met. What day did we meet last week? Whatever day, one day last week we met. They all blend together after a while. And Amanda's gonna give us that update.
Yeah, so Ellen, Lauren, who could be here tonight, and myself are on the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. And one thing, we had worked with Superintendent Legault to like, to set the goals, everything like that, that we did a couple of months ago. But one question that we still hadn't answered on, hadn't answered and wanted to bring to you tonight was the timeline of, it's not the timeline, it's the cycle, I guess, of the evaluation. So not when Liz brings us materials or when we set goals, but do we evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis, every two years, et cetera? We can set that cycle. So we had some discussion, and our recommendation, especially because of the tumultuous last few years and the fact that I feel like it was still not a full calendar year that we did this year to like, give you to set the goals and appropriate, we wanted to see that full calendar still one year through, and then essentially give it back to the Subcommittee next year to determine whether or not that one-year cycle is appropriate. So the superintendent would be evaluated, as we've planned this year, in a couple of months. Right before May, we'd finish the evaluation right before the election. And then next year would also be a one-year cycle with the determination that the Subcommittee would take that, this decision, back up again the following year.
Is that correct? Did I characterize that? Yeah. And then, and then we knew, we all said, it gets brought back to the full committee, and then the full committee makes the decision on what we do. If we do a one-year, or a one-year cycle, or a two-year cycle. You know, like, the one-year cycle is the full evaluation, and then the two-year cycle is a mid-cycle, which would be after the one year, and then after the second year is the full one. So it's up to the committee. So should I make a motion? You can make a motion.
So I would make a motion that upon recommendation of the Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee, the cycle of superintendent evaluation remain at one year for the 2024 school year. Yeah, I made that motion.
So you made the motion, and is there a second?
And then we can discuss.
Right.
Second.
And discussion. So Amanda motioned, and then Becky made the second.
Becky, did you have a question?
You go ahead, because I feel like our faces are doing the same thing.
The only question I have is, as we might get to the point of considering a two-year cycle, which on a lot of levels probably makes sense. I guess my only concern about it, contemplating it now, is that because two of us are always in flux of perhaps not being back on the committee again, and so I guess I just want to think all the way through that. It to say, hey, does this make sense that, you know, obviously you don't want two people to just sit on the committee to be part of the evaluation, that's not fair. So if there's a way we can change it around that makes the sense that you have the full committee participating?
Well, we made, let's see, the timeline of completing the evaluation, not the cycle, right? So our review, what Liz brings to us, things like that, ensures that the six members on the committee can participate, right? Because we made it so it was before the town election. But I think you're right, and this is kind of why we also wanted to wait to make a decision about two-year cycle potentially next year. That your consideration would take into effect there, right? If you're, you know, only on the committee one year, you're not gonna get to evaluate superintendent maybe till your last year, et cetera. Does that address your concern?
Yeah, no, that's perfect. And I guess I just asked Superintendent Legault, I'm assuming it's not a problem. We were always, it's always focused on, well, the school year ends, and it should all be lined up, but I don't think it necessarily has to line up with the calendar school year, right? It's a cycle of 12 months. So good, bad, or indifferent, it's all gonna show up in that 12 months, whichever you start and stop, right? So, you know, that's good. Okay.
Gordon. Any further discussion?
I think Becky had a lot of questions.
To clarify, this vote is that it is remaining the same right now, and we're voting that the Subcommittee in the future will then bring it back again.
So if you were voting yes, then it would be a one-year cycle for FY24, and then we revisit it again next year and decide if it's gonna be a one-year cycle again or a two-year cycle.
Voting to do that, and then voting to revisit.
Yeah, well, no, it's all in one, it's a package.
I understand. Okay.
Anything else?
What if we just like one-year cycles and don't want to consider it two-year?
You can be on the Evaluation Subcommittee next year. I mean, I don't know, I have no idea. I'm being fresh.
No, because Gordon's point's correct, we could have new members every three years, so you'd, one year you'd be two years in, the next year a couple of months in.
That's right.
It's tough for us to have continuity on our side. I think yearly.
Well, so everyone will, again, the evaluation happens this spring, no matter whether it's one year or two years, as of the timeline we've set right now. So everyone will have had a full year on the committee.
I mean, for the future.
Right, but even if, even if it's a two-year cycle, it'll still happen at the same time that year. Am I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but somebody, in that case, to Scott's point, there might be people on the committee who've only been on it for one year versus the majority have probably been on it for two.
Oh, gotcha, okay, sorry.
Which I guess is a problem.
I know, my first year, I walked into the middle of the evaluation, and had no clue what was going on for quite a while.
Yeah.
The only other thing to think about is, if it was a two-year cycle, then you have longer time to get, like, you still, say the new person comes next year, or whatever, or this year. Yeah, anytime a new person comes, they're still gonna get all of the information to be able to do the evaluation, whether it's a one-year or a two-year cycle. They're gonna be given all the information that is, you know, pertaining to the goals and whatever we're evaluating her on. And, I forget what my other thing was.
We're just deciding now that we might vote later.
We're deciding now that we.
Be quiet until later.
Well, we would be deciding now to do a one-year instead of a two-year. That would be, okay.
Joanne, duly note that we're gonna look forward to Scott's comments any year from now. How can we not?
I'm gonna guess and say there's no further discussion. So, no further discussion, right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Will we visit it next year?
I think so.
Thank you. And next up, we have Superintendent's Corner.
Do you have the Reed's Collaborative Agreement?
I sent you the information the other day. We are a member of the Reed's Collaborative. I sit on the board for you. There are some changes that they have gone through. And we've changed the assessment, the diagnosed services collaborative agreement, and inside the collaborative agreement, you're not gonna, it's, we sort of tightened it up to say, and this is what we do, this is who the collaborative is, what it's all about, the financial terms, how we borrow, our loans, our mortgages, our annual budget preparation, transmitting the budget, it's just everything that we do, it's just our bylaws. And I needed to bring it to you, to give you the information, and that we would talk about it, or so that you would understand it and receive the information, and we just would sign it this evening. And that you agree upon.
Question. So is it that, so we're part of other collaboratives as well, too, and it's an annual vote of this committee whether to stay affiliated with them, and this is just the agreement that how everything operates. So every year, we have to agree or vote on whether we are gonna stay in the collaborative or not.
Yes.
Okay. And the changes that were made, you think, make sense?
Yes. It's really, most of it, we're tightened up. There might have been some loose language, and we tightened some of that up. Other than that, it's really just how the collaborative runs, how financially it runs, and how we align with it financially, and how we continue to promote it and support it.
Thank you.
So I make a motion to approve the Reed's Collaborative Agreement Amendment, which was approved by the Reed's Board of Directors on January nineteenth, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, and its effective date, July twenty-three. Yeah, July first, I mean. Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, very quickly, and then I know you have, I'd like to give some time to, obviously, of course, our strategic plan, number one, on social-emotional wellness, and that takes center stage this evening, because it is our strategic plan, it is what we follow. However, I think you'll hear some things that I think we all know that is occurring with our youth, our own students, and I think they have a lot of good data and a lot of good information this evening, so I'm not gonna take up too much time. But I did, we have had budget Subcommittee's meetings. We continue to work on the budget, we continue to talk to our principals, we continue to talk to our directors. John and I, Dr. Williams, along with the Budget Subcommittee, we continue to talk and try to create a budget that is healthy, that is responsible, is sustainable, and reliable for the district. We also meet, we've met twice on two Fridays. We have met with Dan Pika, the Finance Committee Chair, Charlie Seelig, who is the Town Administrator, Mrs. Pennington is the School Committee Chair, myself and John Shea. And this previous Friday, or this last Friday, Gordon McKinnon was there, wanted to come in and have just another person there, so that we could all hear the same message, and had another member of FinCom.
I don't remember her name.
Forgot. Name, I apologize for that. So, at the meeting, I did talk about a little about the timeline and where we were at. As you know, we have a new governor, Maureen Healy. She has, she gets a little bit more time to get her budget ready, to give out to the Commonwealth. We have not heard nor seen any budget from the State House at this time. So they are gonna be late, we usually would know about now, we would usually have some hints on where our Chapter Seventy funding would be coming in. We don't have that right now, we can make assumptions, but I certainly don't want to do that, especially with a new governor coming in, coming out of COVID after two years. There's some other, there was some more push in financial, push for public education, so I don't want to make any assumptions. And so I did ask on Friday in the meeting, could we push our, would the town meeting, or would the selectmen be, would think about pushing the meeting back till June, to give us a little bit more time. As you know, we have to have a public hearing. First of all, I have to, the district has to post it publicly for a public hearing in the Enterprise and in the Boston Globe, which we will do for next week, February twenty-first. We have to do that ten days before a public hearing, have the public hearing, then you get ten days to review it as a school committee, then we come back to a school committee meeting where you have to, whether you approve and certify the budget that you have created as a Subcommittee, and now the Subcommittee brings it to its governing body, the school committee, that is proposed by myself and John Shea for the district, that we support. So on Friday, I asked, you know, could we push this meeting back? Because I'm concerned that we don't have enough time to really get all the information and make sure that we're doing everything we can to support our students, our faculty, our staff, our community, along with the town doing this. And then allowing the town to have a budget that does the same for other departments. So at that time, Mr. Seelig said he would take it to the board, selectmen, and ask them if we could push the meeting back, or even have a conversation about it, and then let me know about the timeline. So today, I received an email, which I passed out to you, from the Town Administrator, saying there really wasn't, didn't look like there was too much of an appetite to move forward or to go into June with a town meeting. So Mrs. Polisi and I and John Shea sat down, and we said, okay, what do we have to do here? How do we move forward? And where is the timeline? Got the calendar out, and if there's no movement, and town meeting is on May eighth, that means that we did our public hearing posting. We have, Barbara sent the email today, and tomorrow she'll have the conversation with the Enterprise to post for, I believe it's February twenty-first next week, so they will post it for the public hearing. So we will have to have our public hearing on March seventh at seven PM in the auditorium. You'll then, we'll bring it back on March fourteenth for a school committee vote to certify the budget. I do not have a date, as you can see, this is what I received from the town. I do not have a date to let you know about when we will present to the FinCom or to the selectmen, and then that brings us into the town meeting on May eighth. I did tell Mr. Seelig, which I sent back to him in an email, as you can see, that the budget that we have, that the Subcommittee, myself, have come up with, which is usually higher than our number that we will certify, but it is the, all the needs of the district, and it is a full budget that supports what we currently have and what we will need to replace retirements, resignations, and in different areas. I did email back, as you can see, that I emailed that the budget that was presented on Friday to, that's, or that was looked over and talked about on Friday in our meeting in my conference room, would be the budget that I will push forward, if this is the timeline that we have.
I don't know.
We feel that that is the most prudent way to go about it at this time. I don't want to cut, I don't want to, you know, cut ourselves short, nor do I want to have to come back. It's much easier to come down from a number.
We can't go up once you certify.
Because we cannot go up. So it would be prudent. And as the fiduciary of the district, listening to the principals and to the staff and directors, this is what we need to continue our services that we're providing today and to possibly continue to add the services that are going to be needed tomorrow, especially in the social and emotional arena that you'll hear about in a few minutes. So.
Thank you.
If there's any questions on that. But that is, so you have the timeline. There was no specific dates that were given to us as the district, so we feel we're in pretty good shape of what we've set, we sent up on time, what we needed to for our first round of our budget, our capital request. We're still waiting, we had, you know, we've gone to ARPA a few times, have requested funding out of the ARPA from the Plymouth County Act, and we have not heard on some of those, but I'm confident that they'll be pushing those forward. So hopefully, we will see those.
Any idea when we'll hear about any of those ARPA decisions?
I don't even believe they pushed them forward at this time.
Yeah, I think the ARPA Committee still has a few more hearings.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any idea if we'll hear anything about any change or anything?
I don't, I, no, I just, it's now February, next week is February vacation. That is usually the time that John and myself will sit down a lot in that conference room and continue to go through the budget. The principals have the requests in, they know what they need. They've requested, they've requested new personnel, requested items, staffing purposes. They've requested the curriculum instruction on piece from Dr. Williams, that's come forward already. We know that we're doing science, so we know where that's coming in at, we know what the schools need. So those types of things are on the table. So we're, we just sit there and hone in on it, and we work on the presentation next week. So I'm trying to stay online, but without that budget, you're sort of in limbo. Once I know, once I hear from the town, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. I did get, I did get a nice candy gram from your friends today. Came down from the Student Senate, dropped some Twix off, which are my favorites, so I want to thank all of you in the Student Senate. I ran down to see Anthony Lapine, it's his birthday today, and it's his last day as a member of our custodial staff here in the East Bridgewater Public School District. On behalf of the district, you know, we wish him the best for a great retirement, happy birthday, and we dropped him off some pastries. And on another note, I'm going to allow John Shea to leave this evening and relieve him of his duties just for this evening, so that he can go home and enjoy his twenty-fifth wedding anniversary.
I gotta get to McDonald's.
Yeah. Before they close. You can have two cheeseburgers. So congratulations, Happy Valentine's Day to Mr. Shea, and congratulations to you on your twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary and Happy Valentine's Day. Next up, we have Strategic Plan Number One, Social-Emotional Wellness, with Mrs. Karen Clifford, Mrs. Deb Dupree, and Mrs. Deb Nichols. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I handed out the, a reminder of the social emotional goals, that there are five strategies. All of the action steps are in place and ongoing as needed by students. Oh, I didn't know I had them all, sorry. I thought it was a big package. Throughout the district, I just wanted to remind everybody of our social emotional support staff. We have one BCBA for the entire district. School psychologists, we have one in each building. School adjustment counselors, we have two at the Central, two at the Mitchell and one here at the junior senior high school. School counselors, we have one at the Central, two at the Mitchell and four at the high school. All of them are very, very, very busy. Our referrals are up through the special ed department. The Kins have been very active since after Christmas and students in crisis are increasing. Mental health issues, oh, forgot to finish that sentence.
Just a quick question.
Are not going away.
When you say school counselors, are you talking about guidance counselors?
Guidance counselors.
Okay. Thank you.
So our ongoing initiatives, we started with the equity work with Dr. Warham from the beginning of the year. She's coming back on March 27th. She'll be here to work with representatives of our task force teams in each building to develop age-appropriate language when interrupting bias. Dr. Warham will also work with teams to review handbook language to establish universal policies which encompass and identify practices that promote diversity, equity and inclusion of all backgrounds. The Castle Frameworks were introduced last year to all faculty and staff and continue to be integrated in building staff meetings and professional development. District team is participating in the Mass Partnership for Youth, which is an ongoing partnership we've had for over a year. A webinar series that begins early March, five sessions covering each of the five components with emphasis of integrating into classroom instruction. So the district team is being put together to attend and it will cover empathy, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness and relationship building.
Excuse me, what does Castle stand for?
You explained it last time.
Good answer.
Say that again?
Collaborative for Action. So it's almost on.
But duly noted.
Sorry, I divert a, defer to freshmen. Enough art. Acceleration academies, again, are going to happen throughout the district in both February and April for grades three through 10 to support student learning strategies and success. And we continue to use attendance data and survey data compiled to a panorama to guide, further guide our efforts to help assist students to be successful. The Student and Family Experience Survey that was conducted in the fall will be administered again at the end of the year to measure growth. Planning is underway right now for that. Safety care initial certifications and recertifications have been completed for this school year. Informal overview of the safety care de-escalation strategies has been completed for all ISAs and special area teachers. Translated materials are provided, continue to be provided to families in their native languages through the Parents Square platform. So our upcoming new initiatives, we have a new partnership with the JED Foundation. JED is the nation's leading organization dedicated to young adult mental health. Suicide is and continues to be a leading cause of death among young adults. So JED works with school communities at the high school and college levels to develop and launch a blueprint for suicide prevention by working to overcome the hurdles that prevent honest discussion of mental health issues, which is typically shame and secrecy. We continue our partnership with Kyle Cares with a new initiative to run a mental health for coaches training, which will be held on March 16th. Kyle Cares is sponsoring this initiative and the Mental Health Collaborative will be doing the training. It will be done three times a year so that we can reach all seasons, all coaches, and this will help train coaching staff on proactive approaches to supporting students and athletes and will also help us to develop a support system for outreach needs outside of the school day and outside of school hours. That's the, sort of the district overview piece. Now we'll go to the Central School, give us some highlights.
And there are so many highlights at Central School today and every day. I think it's timely that we're here on Valentine's Day, talking about social emotional learning where we're trying to build feelings of love and acceptance with all of our students. So today is a timely day to, for us to have this discussion. At Central School, we feel that social emotional learning permeates through every, every pore of our building, every pore of every teacher that's in our school. It's in the language that we use as we speak to one another. It's in the language that we use as we speak and instruct our students. We use the responsive classroom methodology when we're building classroom communities as we start the year by setting goals, having students choose what their goals are going to be. Recently, coming back in January, the students have been able to revisit those goals. Have I met my goal? If I haven't, what can I do to get there? Or if I've met it, what can I do next? How can I further myself? All those conversations are facilitated by our talented teaching staff. We also encourage all classroom teachers at the beginning of the year to make classroom go, classroom rules with their students. Revisit that again in January. Are these, are these rules still working for us? Do we have them down pat? Do we need to add rules? Do we need to feel like, you know, some of them, we've met, we've, we've got this, it's intrinsic. So our teachers have really been busy revisiting all the things that they started at the beginning of the school year. Last time we met with you, we were rolling out a social emotional report form for our parents to receive in November. We did have some great feedback from our school council regarding the social emotional learning report card. Families felt that they really had a better understanding of the specifics of where their students were and where they were developing in, in a, in a social emotional realm. So that feedback was great to have from the families at our, at our school council. In speaking with teachers, they're, they had a wide variety of things that they were excited about and things that they wanted to look at again and revamp. Based on that feedback during our PLCs last Friday, teachers looked at those social emotional standards and then they really worked together to unpack them. You know, what exactly does this standard mean in this grade level? So when they can meet with, with families again in March, they may have more specific talking points. Some felt like, I really, I had like the umbrella of what this meant, but to have a bulleted list of this is how it really unpacks and what it means, so they could have more meaningful conversations with families when they meet again in March. So we're looking forward to our, continuing our pilot year with that and again, continuing to get feedback regarding the standards, how they're enrolled, how they're reported to families, so that when we go into the school year 23, 24, we can actually have this report form changed in our school brains report card. Right now, it's an attachment to what we have, so next year it'll be embedded into the report form once we have feedback from all the families, teachers and other stakeholders. So we're really excited about that change in our report form and being able to inform families of more specifically where their students are in their growth and development. We've also, as part of our school improvement plan, Mrs. Byrne initiated a parent workshop series. So every month we've had at our PTO meeting, a different topic covered with parents. Last month, Deanna Monroe, our special education teacher in second grade, who is a responsive classroom trainer, she was able to come to the PTO meeting and talk to parents about what responsive classroom means and what that looks like to their students. Again, the things that I mentioned to you earlier about goal setting and creating a climate and culture of inclusivity and care and kindness and a collaborative learning environment. So that was really exciting to have her be able to share that with families as well. We're in the preparation stages for multicultural performance, which will happen, the rehearsal will be June 5th and the multicultural performance will be on June 6th. All of our special area teachers are collaborating to put together a performance that's going to include music, the arts, movement, and they're, so they're all really excited and would love to have you all attend. So, you know, it's, like I said, it's embedded in everything that we do. We've spent a lot of time and Mrs. Byrne's scholastic dollars in creating cultural, more culturally responsive classroom libraries for all of our teachers, which is excellent. And some of the things that I'm sure at the high school level and upper levels you might not realize, but our preschool are now more culturally responsive with the toys and the dolls and the foods that they have in their kitchens. All, all of those foundational pieces, I really feel that we've been able to up the ante on as we've been moving along. So we're really excited for all of those things. And if you're looking for, you know, a smile tomorrow, our students have reached their $40,000 plus dollar goal for their fun run. Mrs. Byrne and myself will be riding bicycles around the school in our full safety gear. Don't worry about us, Superintendent Luell. We have our helmets, our knee pads, our elbow pads. So again, moments of joy. If, if you want to come see us.
Would that be a full-size bike or a tricycle?
Well, it will be, I'm riding a full-size bicycle. Mrs. Byrne has a student size, but not a tricycle. She's on two wheels. We're both, we're both going for the gusto tomorrow. But, so that'll be another fun activity that we do at Central School. No, she's not going to be on the unicycle.
Thank you.
But it'll be a great day, so come wave, wave to us at arrival tomorrow.
What time is it?
The bicycle riding? Well, it'll be in the beginning part of the day. We'll be ending the day with a bicycle ride and there might be a few jaunts here and there. You never know where we're going to show up on our bicycles. Yep. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was great, Deb. And we take what Central School does so well with that love and care and concern with the little ones and enhance it and develop it as they come into the Mitchell School. So we try to take what they're doing and just promote it at a different level developmentally. So to update you at what we've been doing at Mitchell School, we have looked at it from an umbrella perspective of what are the big things that we can, can do to affect the entire school population when it relates to SEL and then break it down all the way to the individual level. How can we target individual concerns that students are having? And as Mrs. Clifford alluded to, we have a lot of students that are really struggling and are going through a lot of trauma. We even had a couple of kids these past couple of weeks lose parents and that's a huge event in a child's life. So we're looking to really support our students on a level, social emotionally, so that they can access academics. That's why the district decided to put SEL first as our first goal, because learning can't occur unless our students are well emotionally. So we're really addressing that in an aggressive manner with the support systems that we have in place and trying to enhance that. So we look first at our attendance policy since we last met because kids, if they're not here, they can't learn. So in order to access that learning that we have for them and those supports, they have to be here. We've approached it now a little bit more from a caring and supportive perspective in terms of giving a phone call and saying, we noticed that Johnny has been absent the last five days. What's going on? How can we support you and how can we get the child here at school? And approaching it as a collaborative effort with the families, because our goal is to get students here. So we've revamped that and we've had some attendance meetings where we're looking at individual circumstances. We've had guidance and administration reach out to families and that has been effective. Also, when we look at the big picture, we're looking at things that we've implemented such as Rachel's challenge and then continuing those initiatives through the KC Club, where we're looking at kindness and compassion and how we can spread that at our school and throughout the community. So we've already done a food drive and we've done a coat drive and we're trying to teach kids that it's about giving to others and that makes you feel good and enhances your self-esteem and it's about a community. We're also looking to do Boston versus bullies and it's a topic that we've addressed because we really, as a district, look at kindness and how we treat one another. So we're looking to have that assembly in March for students and also do a parent night because we heard and expressed some interest from parents wanting to gain some more information about what is bullying, what is bullying not, because sometimes there's some confusion in the definition there. So we hope that parents come out for that night as well. Then we look at how equipped our staff are and we have such a talented staff, as Deb alluded to, they're doing some great things infusing social emotional learning into the everyday teaching and taking those teachable moments and making sure kids understand what's acceptable, what's not, how to create friends, how do we treat one another. The Mitchell School piloted a program called Everyday Speech and we were looking at a program that was video-based and had scenarios. We decided not to go with that program and that's okay, that's part of the process because teachers feel like there are better things out there to address the entire classroom. So we're looking at curriculum approaches that might be more effective, but teachers have done a phenomenal job of infusing social emotional learning into their everyday teaching and learning and I'm sure that you can attest to that as well, Deb. We have staff that are highly trained in safety care approaches. Now I know Karen talked about de-escalation strategies, approaching students with challenging behaviors in a way that we don't engage in power struggles. The three of us are actually trainers for the district and we have trained 17 new staff this year in those approaches, as well as recertified 27 staff. That has to be recertified and renewed every year, that certification, and they are wonderful strategies on how to approach students with a respectful approach and a kind approach so that we don't escalate situations. So that has been used as well. We've really approached the DEI piece, looking at how do we engage families more through a cultural lens? So just like Central School, we administered a survey this year to our families and then our adjustment counselors created a map in the hallway and it's really about where do our students come from? What are their homes? And even I found out that some of our kids are from Ecuador, Malaysia, Honduras, Haiti. And we can learn so much from our students and allow them opportunities to share in the classroom and that's how we can build cultural awareness. So that's something that we've been trying to do more of. And then we've established a peer mentoring program with our adjustment counselors. They have trained some sixth grade students in how to really engage in conflict and peer mediation. So if we have an ongoing situation with students where they just can't get along, we might send them with the peer mediators and the adjustment counselors oversee the whole process and they develop a contract and a way to get along with each other and they kind of air their differences and they come to some kind of resolution and it's been really effective with certain students. So we're looking to expand that program and really connect with the junior senior high school to see how we can continue it on, but also have the junior senior high school students come down to our school and really interact with our kids as well, with the peer mentoring. So we're excited to expand upon that piece with the junior senior high because they have so much to offer. And then I did want to mention Mr. Alan Diaz Martin, and I'm sure Mr. Phelan can attest to this, he has been highly used by our staff. He's our district BCBA. We have consulted with him in terms of developing behavior plans for our students, looking at doing functional behavioral assessments and really doing some observations to see how can we best meet the needs of our students in a social emotional manner. So he has, he has been highly effective so far. We've also done weekly support team meetings and this kind of breaks it down to the individual level where we've looked at with our leadership team, what are the needs of the kids that have really risen to the level of us as a leadership team and what are we going to do as a think tank to try to solve and help resolve some of the issues that they're having? And that comes back to the social emotional piece. If a child's not coming to school because they have anxiety, what are some approaches that we can use to best address those needs of students? So there's definitely a focus on taking care of our kids and making sure that we know we're teaching human beings and this piece is so critical to their well-being and to their learning and we're only, only going to see academic achievement if we address these needs first. And that's it.
Does anybody have any questions? Oh, sure.
Junior senior high school is the, the final leg of the journey of students with social emotional learning and although it's not exactly the opportunity for classroom lessons as much as at the Central and the middle school, a lot more intervention is done on an individual, small group basis. I do know that they conducted a mental health fair, they had over 30 vendors in November. They are presenting Break Free From Depression, which is something that we were doing pre-pandemic and I have now just got back to it for eighth grade and 12th grade. They are key members of the group that's working with the JED Foundation to get it established in the district. They also work on attendance and heavy on the crisis response, which I just wanted to... which I just wanted to... The principal is also integrating social, emotional in his weekly newsletter to staff and families, as well as all of his staff meetings. It's all around the Castle Frameworks and the ideas behind all of our social, emotional strategies.
Thank you all for sharing. It's really impressive, Deb. I guess what occurs to me is, thank goodness, doing all this stuff, I don't know what it was like when I was in school, but we definitely didn't have this stuff. Is there a standardized way of saying, of evaluating, is this working, is it not? I mean, how do you evaluate it?
With the Castle Frameworks, it's a lot easier to evaluate, because they're very specific, and there are activities. There's lots of research that has come out in the last, I would say, ten to fifteen years with specific lessons and objectives based around the same strategies that a teacher uses to make sure that they're hitting their objectives. So it's a little easier. We do have to rely on subjective ways, like with the family experience, because in our world, social, emotional, it's perspective. If they perceive it, then it is, and that's the reality that you kind of have to deal with and adjust. So there are things that we know that we can do developmentally, behaviorally, that is age-appropriate, and then there are other things that we have to respond to what's in front of us. I've often said that a grade level will have their own kind of personality, like they will often have their own set of problems or issues that need to be addressed.
Some of our students that work one-on-one with our adjustment counselors may be working in a program called Centravention or a program called Social Detective. And in those types of programs, those are very scripted, where you move from one level to the next, to the next, to the next, as you're able to demonstrate understanding with certain social constructs.
Yep.
And we're dealing with the affective realm, which is a little more challenging to measure, to your point, but we look at, can the students, after we give them strategies in what we call their toolbox, apply those strategies in real-life situations and ultimately take some anecdotal data on how well they're doing in terms of their own problem-solving and overcoming some of their issues.
Yeah, and one of the thoughts that occurred to me is that, since the teachers are on the front line, I wonder if periodically you just ask the teachers, is this getting better, or you still see problems, or I suspect there's a system for them to give you feedback as to, wow, this seems to be a... There's always going to be individual challenges, but just overall, like, the atmosphere in the school seems fairly well. It seems fairly good, positive and supportive.
Mrs. Byrne and myself, the reading and math specialists, are conducting data meetings with our teachers right now, with every single teacher in the building, and that's, you know, the first conversation. How are things going in the classroom? What's the climate? How are the students doing? Before we get to, okay, let's dive into the math and reading data. How are they socially and emotionally?
Thank you.
I'm really interested in this, the feedback. I think when Mrs. Byrne brought it up earlier about, or earlier, later last year, sorry, about the social, emotional report card, that piece. Like, that seems to me, I think, I'm not an expert on developmentally appropriate curriculum, but that could be something that's scaled up to other grades as well, and I just wonder if that's like something that you might be interested in. You know, obviously, this is the pilot year. We're going to learn a lot. We're going to continue to do that. But I think that, especially from what you're describing, what parents are saying, that it's really helping to understand what's happening, to be able maybe to put some of what they're noticing into words, like a little more, I wouldn't say measurable, but like, a little bit more objective. Yeah, exactly, observational. So I just think that's incredible and would love it if, like, we could hear more about maybe how we could in the future, once, you know, this year is done.
Well, in many ways, we look to the Central School to pilot and stop these things, and then when it works, we like to continue it with the kids all the way through, because it becomes feedback for them as well.
Yeah, that's what I figure. And you also, I mean, as a person who measures some of this for a living, right, you have that longitudinal data also about what's going on with our students as well.
You don't want to start that with the eighth grade.
Sorry. No, no. But just, while all these efforts, really appreciate all the work that's gone into this and appreciate that the district is really putting this front and center. So, thank you all.
Absolutely.
The, I read the section about the de-escalation strategies. Is that done for all teachers or just ISAs and special?
So this year, we did it for the ISAs and special area teachers.
Could it be rolled out to all faculty and staff?
Yes. And again, Central School has put together some...
Yeah, certainly. Many of our staff are trained in the de-escalation strategies, because they're part of that core team that's trained in safety care. But certainly, that information is, I, oh, it must have been, it was pre-COVID that I went into grade-level meetings, and with the staff at the time, I went through all the de-escalation strategies with them. Like I said, that was a few years back, and since then, we've been so happy and pleased to bring on new staff, that that certainly is something that we could revisit. And I did the same. Deb and I work a lot together on the de-escalation piece, and we train together at our trainings. And so did the same at PLC meetings. Kind of just summarized the program. Not everyone is trained in the program, because it actually takes twelve hours to train someone in the entire program and to be certified, but there are strategies that everyone can benefit from and can apply right away in the classroom, and that's what we summarize with all of our classroom teachers within the PLC community. So to your point, absolutely.
I'd imagine the intent is if a child's having a tough moment, that someone that has some basic training could help them and then get them to someone more experienced.
Yes.
Correct. And all of our behavior specialists throughout the district are trained in safety care, so they are the typical first responders to a classroom, to assist a teacher.
Thank you. And next time, can you do this on the bike?
Well, I'll practice my script tomorrow.
I'll try to combine them all.
I'll give you back.
Anybody else?
You're welcome.
Oh, I wanted to say one thing. So knowing that we have a shortage of counselors out in the world, and knowing that social, emotional issues, mental health issues are more prevalent now, that we're seeing more of them, and knowing all of the counselors, adjustment counselors, BCBA, whatever, in a perfect world, how, how many do you think we need more people? Like, how many more do we need in a perfect world, comfortably?
I know, in a perfect world, perfect is perfect. And Mrs. Byrne chimed in, is also, I would love to see an adjustment counselor, an adjustment counselor at each grade level in our school. Adjustment counselors have that next level of training to actually address that mental health piece, and I think that that is so key. So my hope and dream, I would love to have an adjustment counselor at each grade level, and then social workers to help kiddos, even the students that need that mentor in the community. You know, if we could provide that support for our students, that would be, that would be a nice hope and dream for us.
Sometimes in larger districts, you see, in a high school level especially, deans, right, and deans stay with the grade level, and of course, they then interact with adjustments and guidance. And there's something to the consistency of a grade level seeing the same people, following them with social, emotional wellness, for the consistency in their trusted Obviously, I would say one-to-one. Twenty-five hundred.
Well, I will say, for the high school, you have almost a thousand students here.
For one adjustment counselor. Right.
And this is the first year we've had an adjustment counselor. So we have made our focus. We grew from the Central School up. We've been working on the social, emotional for years, and we will continue to, but I think that this is where...
My last question is, would you say that the guidance counselors, knowing that they're really busy, they must be really busy, like, speaking to kids with mental health issues, not just going over their classes and things?
Correct, because they would only do their classes when they do scheduling, really. Other than that, it would be adjusting to a particular class or a teacher's style or those kinds of high school student issues that they have.
Right.
But they are dealing with, you know, these presentations, the Break Free From Depression. They're dealing with a lot of those other mental health issues, because guidance counselors are able to work with some of the social and emotional aspects of the student. It's when it reaches a different level. Prior to a special ed referral, you would want them to work with the adjustment counselor.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So, I don't know, perfect world? Ten? More?
More.
Perfect.
Say twenty.
We learned earlier, it is best to ask for more and then dwindle it down to less.
Great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Safe riding tomorrow.
Thank you.
Be careful tomorrow.
Can't wait for those pictures on social media.
Kate?
Over the bike.
Mrs. Byrne, how many adjustment counselors would you like at Central School?
How many would I like?
You all, you...
She said one per grade, but it...
You asked the wrong person, so, go ahead, Kate.
Well, I would agree with Deb, that one per grade to me is a reselling number.
Right? I don't think that's really shooting too high. I think that when you think about, you know, roughly a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty students per grade level, one adjustment counselor is more than fair. If you want to really dial down and think about potential caseload, then you'd go deeper. But even doing one per grade level would be a huge increase for this district.
Should I do a...
Would be put to good use? Absolutely. Does it allow for consistency? It does, because you allow that person to loop with those students. So that target always moves, but they're with that same clientele. They have the relationships with families and students, and they move with them. At least within a building section, that would make sense. And then transition, right? Very reasonable. That's not aiming too high. That's a level-headed number.
Jay?
Yeah. You're trying for more interns as well from North River Collaborative?
Right now, we have one social work intern, MSW intern in each building. Next year, we're shooting for two at least in each building. So I know they're starting the interview process today. I talked to Beth Litchfield at North River this morning, and I gave her my mantra that we only get the best in EB. So she needs to find me the very best and send those to us.
Thank you. Next up, we have the School Meals for All program initiative. So I received an email from Jason Fraser. He is, he is the MASC Vice President and Legislative Chair, and he brought, you all have the email, and he was basically asking school committees to please talk to their legislators about the School Meals for All program. And he happens to note that students who eat free and nutritious meals at school reduce financial strain on family food budget. Kids who participate in school meals are more likely to eat fruits, vegetables, and milk, and that their nutrient, these nutrient, yeah, I can talk today. Nutrient-dense foods contribute to lower childhood obesity rates. National School Lunch Program lunches provide one-third or more of the recommended levels for key nutrients. Research shows well-nourished child is better learner, has taker, and participant in school, et cetera. And then he references, there's two dockets. One's a House docket, one's a Senate docket, and they're both signed by different legislators in the Commonwealth. And so there are some people that are signed on, some haven't signed on yet, to, basically, they're, these two dockets are talking about that, so the federal government pays for some of our food meal programs, and then what this, what these two dockets are, they're talking about whatever the federal government does not provide or pay for, that the state of Massachusetts and DSE will pay for. So they're just asking that different school committees across the Commonwealth advocate for these with their legislator. So I wouldn't advocate for the school committee unless I had your approval to talk to the legislator. So that's what I was bringing this to this evening about, to see how you felt about it.
So I have a couple of questions. One is, we have this program in place now, right? Or is it just a matter of this vote's going to continue? Is it right now?
We hope. I mean, right now, we have universal free meals, and we hope that that continues. I mean, that's, I mean, that's the goal.
And so prior to this, we would charge three dollars for a meal, whatever it is, and then, well, by that time, how many people get a meal? How does this, the mechanism of this work? Do we backcharge the Commonwealth or federal?
Reimbursement.
And they accept whatever our rate is, or is it a universal rate?
I believe it's a universal rate, and we have to follow the state, what the state guidelines are. And then we also do, still do free and reduced lunch, so we have to still put that, that information in. We still have to have parents sign up, and we put that information into the federal government, and everybody signs up regardless, regardless of if you're going to receive a free lunch or reduced lunch or a regular lunch meal price. Everybody signs up so that they can see what our demographics are and, you know, what our data is belonging to our school, and then we get a reimbursement from the state and federal government.
And so the mechanism to do the calculation is keyed, no pun intended, off the registers in the cafeteria? So every time someone goes up and says, oh, a lunch, she hits a button, whatever it is?
Student has a student ID number, and we have a, they call it the Positouch system that is associated with our meal programs and the data that we receive, and it goes right up to Commonwealth. And then Deb Vaughn takes that information, submits it, and then she gets the reallocated reimbursement, allocated reimbursement monthly.
And so prior to this program, the school lunch or the food program has been really well-done. Deb, we've always done really well with it. We would imagine that would be at least as good, if not better, with this program.
Yes. As long as, it's really the record-keeping of how we do it, and it is really getting all of our families, our grandparents, parents, whoever, you know, has the child in the home, as long as they're doing the paperwork and we get the paperwork back, it supports the district. And, you know, when everything aligns up with our data and the free and reduced meal forms, when they all go through, that's when we get allocated. I mean, right now, we're working on breakfast at the Central School and Mitchell School. It's getting better every year. I know we've got to change a few things at Central School for next year, just due to the guidelines, because every time you do something, there's more and more guidelines, as you know.
Yep.
So they got to go through lines. We just put another, second line in at the Central School. There's two, there's two lines, but you're going to have two checkouts. So I mean, we're doing a better job. We're getting more, you know, more technology in the cafeteria so that we can know exactly how many kids are eating, what they're eating, and we get more reimbursement. There was a time you didn't get reimbursed for pre-K and kindergarten meals. Now we do. So, I mean, it's all, it's all record-keeping. It really is all record-keeping. And you got to follow the guidelines of the Commonwealth and the FDA.
Great. Thank you.
One thing I would like to note is that I did notice that Walt O'Timlty, our state senator, signed on to these.
And Michael Brady did, too.
Oh, yes. Does anybody else have anything? How do you all feel about it?
Liz, if you, if every student got breakfast and lunch, that's ten meals a week, what percentage do you say in the school district that that's the only ten meals they can count on in the week? Is it, not do you have a number for that, but is it a lot?
I think we're thirty, we're pretty close to about thirty percent right now, free and reduced lunch.
Correct. So for those students, those ten meals, the only ten they can definitely count on?
We also, you know, there's, we also have, it's something that we don't love to do, because we don't like to let food out of the cafeteria because of the legal purposes, but we do have, there's once in a while that we will send home food for a weekend if we have to, or if there's a situation in it with a family, that some fruit will go home or some milk or a couple of sandwiches that may have been made at times. Deb Vaughn will kill me for saying that tonight and for tomorrow, but I think it is, we do the best that we can. We also, at times, just, some of you may or may not know, we do have Stop and Shop cards that we've gotten as donations, or we've bought in ourselves, or Dr. Williams has secured them for us, and they have been given out to our schools. And so a family in need may go to Mrs. Dupre or Mrs. Nichols and give out a couple of Stop and Shop cards going home into the weekend, or at the high school, I was going to say Mr. Clint, or Mrs. Anderson will know which family that may need it, or an adjustment counselor will come forward, or the school psychologist will come forward. But I couldn't give you an exact number, but we're around thirty percent now.
Correct.
We came down... an exact number, but we're around 30% now. We, we came down, at one point, we came down to 20%, then we went up to 22%, now we're back up to around 30% free and reduced.
I mean, I think we just had a whole conversation about if a student isn't taken care of mentally, that they're not ready to learn. Basic needs, physical hungers.
Food insecurity is just, it's, it's a real, real problem.
Absolutely.
For a lot of kids, so. It's important to support this.
You know, we, we say that, and I, I agree with you. Like, I, I would like to take, you know, 30 minutes out of every day and have all the kids in the district have breakfast, and then in the aft, and then have a snack, and then have lunch, then have a snack, and then send them home and have a snack. The, I guess the unfortunate piece is we, we also have, you know, so many minutes that we have to get of academics in the day. And we still have that mindset of if a child's eating an apple in my room, they, they can't be paying attention to me while I'm talking math, or social studies, or science, or English. So, we, we are working on that, and I do know that, you know, we have many conversations about this amongst the superintendents and the Commonwealth, that, you know, do we have to put a number to the amount of minutes for, in the classroom? You know, because if, you know, Mrs. Byrne talks about the whole child, you know, the whole child is, you know, feeding them, you know, supporting them, talking with them. And we do the whole child throughout the district, you know, as they talk tonight, you know, start at Central School, because it is, it's the beginning of the road of their pre-K through 12 to 22, age 22, academic career. It's, this is not an easy society to live in right now. There's a lot of social and emotional harm that's going on, a lot of students that come in with trauma. We have a lot of kids that are happy. We have a lot of kids that are hungry. We have kids that are living with their grandparents because their parents couldn't fulfill that, that job of being a parent, not because they didn't want to, but they might have gotten caught up in something else. So, principals are doing a fantastic job of keeping their buildings going, and I, I hope, Ellen, that we can get 20 adjustment counselors, and an adjustment counselor per building. And I wish we'd get rid of 900 in, what is it, 25 minutes? 942 minutes?
990.
990.
900 for elementary.
900 minutes.
They can eat and work.
I know.
Working snack.
I know we can, but not every classroom likes to have them in there. And so, we, we run into that as well. Being honest, Mrs. Byrne, that's what happens, and. Here it comes. But I will tell you a good thing. At the high school, we, Mrs. Vaughn did apply for a grant, received a grant to put in a, a kiosk type of breakfast in the, the Dewhurst concession stand outside of the gym area, and that breakfast will be served every morning, starting Monday, February 27th, after the vacation. So when students come back, juniors and seniors mostly, because they park out here, they can walk in and get an Egg McMuffin, a bagel and, you know, bagel cream cheese.
Yeah, more of a grab and go, as opposed to going down to the cafeteria and sitting down for breakfast.
And we find a lot of our seniors and juniors don't go down to the cafeteria, they just hang out up here and talk, or go to their classrooms. So, we're excited about that. And, you know, a little bit more looking, forward-looking towards, you know, if you go to a college, that's what they do. They grab a bagel and they walk through the, walk to their next class, because there's a kiosk or a small grab and go station. And this is going to be, this is sort of adult-like, you know, go in, be adult-like, grab something to eat, you don't have to buy it, put your number in, so.
Throw your trash away.
Throw your trash away. We put some more high tops up, so sort of a nice little, an aerial, a little cafe. We even got more trash barrels for you and your friends who are going to eat there. I'm putting this all on your back, you know. You're going to be the first one in line on Monday.
Absolutely. They might even name a breakfast sandwich app. Sounds like a good competition.
But we're excited about that. And I think that, you know, when you say there is that food insecurity, I have been pushing for this, to do something in that, that area for the last couple of years, and trying to make sure that we did everything that the state and the federal government wanted us to in that area, and how we had to set it up, and what type of food you can serve, and how could we do that, not in the cafeteria and this, that. And it finally, it, it just came to fruition. I think a lot, I mean, thanks to COVID, hate to say that, but thanks to it, they saw that there are, this is a big issue for kids. And high school students especially, you know, they, they leave their house, they come in their car, they drink a Pepsi, or stop and get a, an iced coffee on the way in, and, and, you know, they need something. And hopefully, this'll, this'll help. So excited about that.
Thank you.
So can I make a motion that the East Bridgewater School Committee supports the School Meals for All legislation?
Program?
Program?
Yeah.
I moved it.
Second? All in favor?
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Ellen, before you go.
Bless you.
Thank you.
I bless you. Before you go to any more action items, there was something that came across my desk today, and I, I pushed it aside because I wanted to.
Is it this?
Strategic plan. If, I, I would just wanted to read something, and some of you may have saw the news today, and watching the news. A few weeks ago, we had our own lockdown. Today, a school in Duxbury, Massachusetts, they, they had a lockdown. I just want to read something I did receive from the state police. I did speak to Chief O'Brien today. We are, we're on alert that if a call were to come in, but I want to just talk about this. What is happening is that they, there are telephone calls being made to the local police or school district, and saying that there is a, I'll read this to you, but maybe a shooter on campus, and there'll be gunfire in the background, and it'll put us in a lockdown, in a situation where we would call on the authorities. If, I'll read this now, but at the end of it, I will say that, in any event, that a telephone call were to come in, or to any of our schools, if we were to hear of any type of event that involves any type of violence, or a threat to any of our schools, inside or out, I will put us in standby into a lockdown position, wait for the authorities to come and to clear us. Many of you might have watched or, or read about the Michigan State incident last night, where three, three students were killed on their campus, and five were, were injured. This is real. And it was, I was very proud that we are a member of the Alice community, because when they were talking to students that were on campus last night, many of the students said, yeah, we've been going through this since we've been in an elementary school, and we learned Alice, and we knew that when they told us to stay in place, or shelter in place, we locked our doors, we listened to the, to the commands of the police, they walked through our dorms, they hit the doors, we knew that we were safe inside our rooms. Students that were walking across campus heard the sirens, knew to run away, and they, they had loudspeaker type of announcements outside, they knew to run to their dorms and to stay put until shelter in place was removed. So it does work. And the more training we do, the more practice we have, the more, I hate to even use the word routine, it becomes. We'll know what to do, and God forbid it ever happens here, but we will, we will always, always err to the side of caution. But today, I did receive this. This came from, through the Department of Education, through the Commissioner of Education, from the Massachusetts State Police and the Commonwealth Fusion Center. The Commonwealth Fusion Center, CFC, is aware of several hoax swatting telephone threats that were made today on 21423, and yesterday, 21323, of an active shooter at schools in Massachusetts. The male caller states that he is armed with an AR-15 and pipe bombs in a backpack. The call ends with the sound of gunfire. Similar hoax calls have been reported throughout the United States. The calls come in from various area codes, and the caller will sometimes state a name if prompted. In the Commonwealth, the calls have been coming directly into the police department. Any agency receiving similar calls is asked to contact their local law enforcement agency or jurisdiction, as well as their Fusion Center of jurisdiction. The Commonwealth Fusion Center will continue to monitor the situation, provide updates if warranted. We're going to take every situation that comes into the District of East Bridgewater seriously. We will follow our protocols that we have in all of our buildings. We'll, we'll wait for the authorities to say that we are clear, and then we'll come out of it. But I want everybody to know, this is what is happening. This is what happened in Duxbury today. And I think other, four other, three other schools besides Duxbury today. I don't know if you saw the news. I did turn it on around two o'clock, one o'clock, I guess, and Dr. Williams has reached out to Duxbury, making sure that they were all right today. So we, we are in contact with our other school districts when this goes on. We do know that this is going on. Our school resource officer called me immediately, came right down and said, we are listening, she had her radio on, she was listening to the, she was in my office, and we listened to the Duxbury calls. So, this is real. And kids need to remember, you know, making a joke, or doing something like this, in a hoax or swatting telephone calls, is wrong. But it will be dealt with. And in East Bridgewater, it happened a month ago, we will continue to deal with it, and we will deal with it, and we will take it, and we will move with it, and we will keep it up in front, and we will talk about it all the time. Central School, Mitchell School, and the high school are working on their Alice protocols now, and we will be having live drills come springtime, going to our rally points, making sure that students know how to get out of the building, where to go, what to look for, and what to listen for. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
I take a motion to review, to approve the minutes from January 24th, 23.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. I take a motion to, to approve the accounts payable warrant 33SV dated February 8th of 23.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. It's unanimous. I take a motion to approve payroll warrant 32PS dated February 1st, 23.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda. Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. And I would take a motion at the request of Mrs. Linda Messini Pavlov, for the senior jazz band in Rhythmix to take an out-of-state trip to UNH Clark on Saturday, March 11th, 23, to participate in the UNH Clark Terry Jazz Festival. And they did do this last year.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And also, I take a motion at the request of Mrs. Lamie, excuse me, Linda Messini Pavlov, for the music students in grades seven through 12 to take an out-of-state trip on Friday, June 9th, 23, to attend the Great East Music Festival in Canterbury Lake Park. And they also did this last year.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda. Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
We hope they have a great time.
I just want to say, I appreciate the formats that we have. You can follow along, in-state, out-of-state, and all the info that I think is really helpful to see that it's well thought out and organized. So thank you.
And I would take a, oh, hold on a second. I got to get to the next thing. I move that the school committee meet an executive session not to be returning to open session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for purpose seven, to review and approve the executive session minutes from the following executive session meeting, June 28th, 2022, September 20th, 2022, and October 11th, 2022. And at this time, we have to take a roll call vote. Pennington, aye.
Colick, an aye.
Sibler, aye.
Walker, aye.
Kenan, aye. I have a question. I'm sorry. We had a payroll warrant as well, and any public comment too?
Oh, there's nobody here for public, for public comment. I already checked.
Okay.
And then the payroll warrant, do you know what number it was?
32PS.
Oh, we already voted on it.
We did?
Yeah.
Was I here? Did I just vote on it?
Yes.
We did?
Did the motion move the second on that?
Amanda motioned, I mean, she moved it, she motioned, and then Gordon seconded it.
I need to go into the second.
Oh.
We did a.
We're doing a roll call vote.
We have to.
We just did it. Oh, I made the motion.
Second. Sorry.
I motioned and no, sorry. Thank you. The motion has passed. The school committee will now meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, for purpose seven, to review and approve the executive session minutes from the following executive session meetings, June 28th, 2022, September 20th, 2022, and October 11th, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.